My name is Iris Kisslin. I'm Secretary to the Board. Because Nick is not here.
Actually, I am here.
I know you're here, but I want to explain where you are.
My voice only.
Shall we do the Pledge of Allegiance? I don't have the flag, but...
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God.
Under God.
In the civil liberties, liberty, and justice for all. Roll call. Agnes?
Yeah.
Iris here. Edward?
Here.
Nicholas Ciampa?
Here.
I'm here.
Mayor Kramer?
Here.
NBC?
Here.
Kevin McNeil?
Here.
And I'd like to welcome our newest member, Tiana Grisham.
Hello, here.
Hi, how are you?
Hello. There's a little introduction for Tiana. I've met her on the campaign trail, I think. And she's...
Lucky you.
She talked to me about some of the things that she was doing, such as Tink's Golden Girls, which I hope she'll take a minute or two to explain to all of us. And she just struck me as, you know, someday she'll be mayor. And, or maybe she won't have time for that because she'll be some successful businesswoman or whatever she wants to be. That's basically, she will be whatever she wants to be.
Maybe Vice President.
Well, thank you.
She would add a different, you know, edge, a younger edge for all us old fogies and keep us on our toes. So that's...
Hey, 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 watch that. Be quiet.
Well, welcome. It's very happy to meet you.
Thank you, thanks for being on the board.
Okay. January, do you want to say anything or I'll just read the open public meeting statement?
Yeah, just read the open public meeting statement.
Okay. The public, the open public meeting statement is in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the Sunshine Law. This schedule and notification of this meeting has been provided to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, and the Franklin Township Clerk. Copies have been posted in the library's vestibule and are also available at the reference desk. I believe there's no, there's nobody here for the public portion of the meeting. So I'll ask for the approval of the meeting.
Wait a minute. Robert, Bob can look to see if there's anybody for the public portion.
Yes, there's no members of the public in attendance right now.
Hi, Bob.
Hello.
And Bob, thank you for getting this on Zoom because it was much easier than using whatever we had before.
You're welcome. And if I could ask, as you normally do, if you're going to go into a private session, make an announcement so I can pause the recording.
Absolutely. Okay. I'd ask for the approval of the minutes of the prior meeting, please.
So move.
I have a second.
Thank you. Okay. The Director's Report, please. The financial report first. Anybody have any comments?
Okay, can I vote for the approval of the minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we got it.
I thought we did that already.
No, the motion was announced in seconds, so now we got to vote.
I'm sorry. All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Can we have the Director's Report, please? January?
Yeah, we're looking at the financial, the financial reports.
Okay, we'll do that first, yes.
Any questions, comments?
For January, for Tiana, why don't you briefly kind of go over how to read that?
Sure, sure. Every month I send out with my reports, the financial reports. And there's three parts to the financial reports, and they're all on green paper because green is for money.
For dollars.
First sheet is the line item expenses from all the libraries, the main library and the branch. The second sheet is just the branch broken out, the line item. And the final sheet is the revenue from all the branches. And the first column is the month that has just passed, which is July. And the next to the last column on the right is the amount that's been budgeted. And the final column is what percentage of the budget has been spent at this point.
And there's, sometimes you'll see items even early on in the year where you've only gone through a twelfth of the year. It's 80% is spent. That's because not all things are spent, you know, salaries go up pretty evenly. But, you know, things like paying for, I don't know, give an example, January. Insurance might be paid all at once.
Right, right. And a lot of our equipment contracts get paid all at once.
I think one thing that should be mentioned is that our fiscal year is July 1st through June 30th. Yep.
And I can send out a list of what all these line items actually are. I'll send them out to you, Tiana.
Okay.
That'll make it clear. Because it's just the question, I know what I'm talking about, but you've never seen this.
January, would you like to do your program report?
Sure.
Director's Report, yeah.
Okay. Um. What I'd like to say is that during the past months, the library has implemented a very careful and measured reopening and a cautious incremental rollout of services. And I believe that we've successfully navigated the very fine line between keeping the staff and the public safe and giving the taxpayers the service that they pay taxes for. We started curbside pickup on June 15th. Then we expanded that to include what is called grab and go on July 15th. On July 27th, we began to offer copier services and mobile printing. And on August 10th, we opened up one patron computer that is available by appointment. And I'd like to describe to you too what happens when somebody comes into the library these days. When they come in, they're greeted by a staff member at what we call the welcome desk. And that person is keeping count of who's coming in and who's going out. So we know that we're keeping to the requirement that it's only a fourth of the building's capacity. Also, if they don't have a mask, we have masks, we can give them, but that hasn't been a problem. Everybody's been coming and prepared. We also encourage people not to spend more than 15 minutes here. The idea is that they come in, get their books, check out, and leave. And we don't have any chairs, but we do have plenty of hand sanitizer. We've got social distance reminders on the floor and a lot of plexiglass dividers. And we also have a place where visitors can fill out a contact tracing form. We keep these confidentially for a month, and then at the end of the month, we destroy them. And during this time, we've also beefed up our digital offerings. We've set up reference services through a variety of means and created a far ranging schedule of online services. And at this point, I want to thank the Board for your support for helping, giving your support to work this all out, that I think is working relatively well. So far, we haven't had a lot many visitors. We've never even come close to hitting the quarter of a building capacity, but every day it gets a little bit better. People are basically, I think, tiptoeing in. And the other thing I'd like to mention is that on August 18th, I went to a virtual meeting of the Franklin Township Youth Center Services Providers Meeting. And during that meeting, we got a history of the youth center, details of the space, an overview of the proposed center staff and hours. The staff is now scheduled to open in the spring of 2021. And the meeting gave me a chance to introduce myself and find out a little bit about some of the other people that are going to be there. It sounds like they're going to have a lot of very interesting programs and activities going on. And that's all I have to say.
Well, thank you for doing what you do.
How do you do, what do you do about the staff members? Do they rotate? Or do you cut down on the number?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
No, the staff members, the workers?
Yes.
Did you cut down the numbers or do they rotate? Some come in two days or one?
The building capacity includes the number of staff members. Is that your question?
She wants to know if you cut people down or whether you're rotating people or...
Oh, we keep everybody as far away from each other as we can. And some people have moved into various other rooms so that they're not next to each other. And the staff also has plexiglass dividers.
So you have the same number of staff members?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
Are they all wearing their masks?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
January, do you, do you think it would be advisable for me to put, we have a newsletter that goes out twice a month to put a note that the library is open because I got chewed out today by somebody who said, I didn't know the library was open.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, we'll do that.
I think the Franklin reporter can do that too, if you notify him.
Yes. I can try and do that, yeah.
All right, thank you.
January, okay, thank you. January, do you want to talk about the two articles that you sent out to us?
Yes, I can. The two articles were mainly, which I don't have in front of me, were mainly about what libraries in general have been going through with the pandemic that I thought was pretty, a pretty good illustration of what we face into. We have the grand reopening and we have all by ourselves. And I hope you had a chance to read them.
Yeah, they're two very good articles.
January, I have a question on your digital resources.
Yeah.
Nice website, so kudos to you. So right now, any Franklin residents, and I'm referring to students, they just need to have a library card or a library digital access to access to digital books?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So they can apply online or how can...
They can. They can apply online. It's good digitally for 10 days with that kind of material. And then if they want the full-fledged membership, they need to come in in person and get a card that way.
Okay, great, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have any old, any old business to discuss?
So, yeah, I just had a question with all this going on, but, you know, you went to the youth center activity. Have you begun planning the northern branch move? And what you're going to do about that and how you're going to handle that?
Northern branch?
Right. The youth center has room for a library northern branch.
Right.
Right. So have you begun that planning? Do you want to wait till post-COVID? What, you know, what are your thoughts on that?
I have a general idea. I've kind of stalled because of the pandemic. But I do, I do have a basic idea of what to do. I mean, I haven't finalized staff or anything because I don't want to do that yet.
Yeah, I'm not saying you should have. I'm just wondering, you know, what your thoughts are and, you know, will you, you know, maybe you want to wait until, you know, the pandemic's over.
I'll probably be better.
When they say spring of 2021, do you know when in the spring they mean, or has that just been left kind of vague?
No, I think, I think it's purposely vague.
Okay.
Um. You know, that maybe around the time we get a vaccine, so who knows what's going to be happening in spring of 21, so.
Okay.
I guess I, I guess I advise you to have some plan, but I wouldn't get into the weeds of it because God knows what, but...
Nobody knows anything.
Yeah. Okay.
Any new business? Where are we?
New business.
Old business? Anybody?
Nothing.
Nick? Okay. Two things, two things, I'm sorry?
No, no old business from that.
Okay. I had sent out two letters that I didn't report on before. I had sent a letter to the Grounds for Sculpture, to the Executive Director, asking them to please renew the the admission passes that they were giving us. And we never got an answer to that letter. And I had sent a thank you letter to Tom Lennon for his, his time of service on the Board of Directors.
Oh, that.
So, any new business, any old business, old business, any new business?
I have new business.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
I've been talking to a member of the Franklin Women's Club and indirectly some master gardeners. And they have given the library a proposal, not a formal proposal, but they have suggested to me that they would like to create a garden somewhere around the library, maybe near the gazebo, like a butterfly garden that we could use later on for maybe storytimes for the kids or just a nice thing for people to look at. This got started because the members of the Women's Club are watering the flowers by the gazebo. And they've been using the library's water, which is quite a production for them because our closest source is 150 feet from the gazebo. That's a long hose. But through that, through setting that up, I got to meet these people and got to talking to them. And that's when they came up with this suggestion, which I really like. But then it became complicated because we don't know who to talk to first about it. I don't want to step on anybody's toes by sticking a garden outside near the gazebo. So I thought maybe the mayor could tell me what would be the best way to start this. And I can't hear you.
I can't hear you.
On mute. On mute him.
We're playing mute tag. So as always, go to Mr. Vornlocker first. And what he's probably going to do is bring it to the Land Use Committee. And then it'll go before the entire council. I recommend you mention it's for the kids. And council is pretty lenient on the kids. And then, you know, who's going to fund it and what kind of infrastructure changes will there be? Do we need to put in water? That kind of thing. And Bob will probably, well, our engineering group, if there needs to be like water piped over, et cetera. I would talk to Bob. If I can remember, I'll mention it to him.
Okay.
Just so he knows it's coming, but it's not really critical.
Okay. At least that gives me a place to start.
I think it's a good idea. And, you know, Mike, I haven't brought this up to anyone, but Michael Steinbroke, who's been helping me with my town hall meetings and all the COVID stuff, who set up a memorial, a makeshift memorial on the gazebo. He wants to do some kind of permanent memorial to the people from Franklin who have died. Maybe, I don't know, maybe somehow there'd be synergy with those, maybe not. He wanted it somewhere near the gazebo too. The other thing you have to plan is you don't want it to, any of that interfere with seating. The gazebo is a performance gazebo.
Yeah.
Those things to consider, but I think it's all doable. Let's start with Mr. Vornlocker.
Okay.
Anything else that we have to discuss? Nick, do you have a President's Report?
The only thing I can say is that we are proceeding with the subdivision of the land that the Board of Education has agreed to sell to us. It's in the stage right now. We're waiting for the township. I've requested Vince Dominack that he draw up the plan for the subdivision. And once that's drawn up, Rob Toth, Assistant Superintendent of the Board of Education, has already seen the plan. He likes it. He's fine with it, and he will run it through the Board of Education. They must sign it, he must sign it as the applicant for the subdivision. And what I can say is that the Board of Education has agreed and they're going to sell us approximately two acres, actually just a small amount more. But Baylor Street, I'm sorry, Baylor Street is part of the property that will be sold to us. And because of that, there will be an easement for the, along where Baylor Street is because that is the entrance to the Franklin Park School. He's happy with that. And so we're at the early stages of this, but at least the, at least we are proceeding. The subdivision is the first step before we can buy the property. So we're going cautiously and slowly, as the mayor has requested. So why don't you give the big picture to Tiana? She probably doesn't realize... Tiana, we, we have a branch library in Franklin Park, quite far south. And it's rented, and the rent is kind of high, and we even have to pay taxes on it. So for the last three years, we've been working on a plan to build our own building. And pursuant to that, we picked out a piece of property of land right near the Franklin Park School off Claremont Drive. We're buying a two-acre piece of land from the Board of Education. And that's why it must be subdivided off, so that we will buy that. We will build a 5,000 square foot library, which is larger than the branch that we have. And we will own it.
Oh, that'll be...
So we won't have to pay taxes. We'll save approximately $100,000 a year. Plus, we'll have a building that's considerably bigger than the rented space we now have. And it will have a, an activities room.
Oh, great. That sounds...
Program room, I guess. So we were all ready, Tiana, to pull the trigger on this when COVID struck. And one thing I asked, I don't tell the Board, the Board votes. I kind of liaison with the Board. I advise that we don't know what the future will bring right now. We don't know if people are going to be able to... We don't, we don't know if everyone is going to pay their taxes. The taxes for the library is a formula. Taxes for the township is we set a budget and then we figure out how much we have to tax everybody to fill that budget. But the library is different. There's a formula. It's based on property values. Let's say because of COVID, property values go way down. We may not have the money to support another library. So I just, I advise to hold up. The other, the other thing is it's just good government to have a public meeting where people are allowed to come and speak for or against or however they want about it. And right now, though it's getting better, to have a large public meeting is not entirely safe. So we have these obstacles in the way. So, but one thing that Nick has been moving on is subdividing the land, which is a legal procedure, really doesn't take anything. So let's get everything we can do done out of the way so that when we can get going, we can get the, get the ground running.
Right, right. That sounds good. Another library would be great for the community.
January, do we have any idea of the grant status?
I think I'm supposed to find out in September.
Right.
So that's next month.
The grant will help us build the building. Right. By the land. Right. And if we do get the grant, I think we should go ahead because it's, you know, otherwise we'll be throwing away, what, a million dollars? We'll have to figure out a public meeting. We'll have it at Nick's house or something. I don't know.
The...
Clubhouse. By the way, Mayor, have you heard anything at all from the tax collectors as to how the August third quarter taxes are coming in? It seems to be on par with what it was last year, so.
Okay, that's what I was...
The last quarter and this quarter, so far, people are paying their taxes. That's good news. Thank you.
Yeah. Could that be, um, I don't know, I know they, they had like a situation where they were giving people as far as with their mortgage payments. They were letting them defer their payments. And I know that, you know, with my mortgage, my taxes come out of the, out of the mortgage, out of my mortgage payments. I was wondering if that could, you know, if that number could, you know, because, you know, whoever's holding the mortgage is going to continue to pay the taxes, I guess, even if someone is not, is not paying their, their mortgage. So I was just wondering if that could be one of the reasons why the taxes...
Yeah, I'm sure that helps. We don't have exactly...
What they was last year.
Yeah, we don't have exact data on it, but what, what we're guessing is that the mortgage companies are paying the tax, even if they're not getting the mortgage. Because if it goes into foreclosure, they, they want to be on top of that.
Right, right. Yeah, okay.
If there's a lien, the town is always the first lien.
Exactly.
Doesn't want that.
And, and I just say that because I know a couple of people who were affected by that, you know, weren't able because of the pandemic to pay their mortgage. But I think that's going to be ending at the end of this month. As far as whatever, right, you know, whatever remedies that the federal government had set, you know, for people and their mortgages. And I know that I was told by someone that said that's going to be ending. And I guess if anyone didn't, whatever, whatever they didn't, whatever they didn't pay on their mortgage is going to be due at the end of, of October. So I don't know if that's going to, if that's going to make a difference. So I don't know if, if that's going to, if that's going to make a difference.
Yeah, I don't know. Every, every quarter we.
Just, I was wondering.
Yeah, every quarter we hold our breath and see what happens so far. So good.
Yeah, I guess we just have to wait and see.
As far as the other number, the, the total assessment for all of Franklin's properties, that's going to take a bit longer to see whether that goes down or stays the same. That might be a year or two.
Absolutely.
Oh, that was my next question. How long that will that take? So, yeah, a year or two?
Or three? I have no idea.
Okay.
Have we finished all our business? Can we confirm our next meeting date or did we miss something? Our next date would be September twenty-third.
September twenty-third?
Okay.
Great, if we could do it in person.
Oh.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that be something? I still haven't gone to a barber shop.
Change your style, man.
My wife shaves my head.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But anyway, hopefully, hopefully next month, we will, we will all be in the library and we can meet in person, which would be a good thing.
Okay, Iris, you've done a wonderful job. Thank you.
Before, before we.
Yes.
Tiana, would you like to give a couple of, just a couple of sentences on Tink's Golden Girls? I think it's, it's an amazing thing she's done and you guys should know about it. And maybe somehow we'll synergize with the library and things open up.
Sure, sure. So I started an organization about a little over a year ago and for girls between seven and seventeen. It's basically a mentoring program. We empower our girls. Right now, we're meeting outdoors in my backyard, just for the inconvenience. But we basically mentor the girls. I have, at this point, I have about fifteen, almost twenty girls. We talk about a lot of different things such as self-esteem, hygiene, empowerment, money management. We, we do give back to the community as well. Last November, we gave back to Catholic charities. We collected a lot of cans. This year, we're going to try to do it again with the pandemic going on. I don't know how it's going to work out, but we're definitely going to try to do that. We do different events. Last week, well, August fifteenth, I had my second annual backpack drive. So I gave out about a hundred and thirty backpacks throughout the community. Food supplies and then we just filled up all the backpacks and gave them out to a lot of people in the neighborhood. The leftover backpacks, we went to the stores and then just gave them out to any parents that was in need. Last year, we had a Halloween extravaganza, which was basically another option for the kids to do. The treating is limited sometimes, so we had a little Halloween fun in my backyard. Had like a haunted house, different stations for the kids. This year, I don't know, with COVID going on, hopefully, things change. And yes, basically, we just brainstorm different activities for our girls, try to keep them busy, try to keep them together and uplifting each other and yeah.
Wonderful, sounds like.
That's amazing.
Really impressive.
Really impressive.
Thank you.
Tiana, that sounds great. I'm just wondering how long it's going to take you to fulfill the mayor's prophecy?
What's the name of the organi, of your organization again?
Tink's Golden Girls.
What area? What area do you?
It's like this Somerset County, basically. Most of the girls are, lives in Franklin Township. Some are in New Brunswick, but most of them are Franklin Township residents.
That's good and it's something that's.
How do you hear of them?
What are your application?
Oh, it's just do an application. We take all our girls, we don't deny anybody. So pretty much is do the application, fill out the paperwork. So I can get all the background information, doctors' information, all their important back emergency texts and everything like that. Once I get that, they're basically in. Yeah. Social media, that's like my biggest platform, social media, Instagram and Facebook. And also a lot of parents, word to mouth. When Pop Warner was going on, like the football, my nephew plays football. So that was another way for me to talk to parents and let them know that what I was doing. So yeah, pretty much word of the mouth. A lot of parents have friends and then their friends' daughters join. So it just slowly started spreading.
Sounds like a wonderful idea.
Thank you so much.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I think we look forward to seeing each other on September twenty-third.
Okay.
In the meeting, right?
Yes, meeting is adjourned.